Good evening, everyone. If you could join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bush.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Clay.
Here.
Latandra.
Here.
Levack.
Here.
Motola.
Here.
Nieves Mathias.
O'Connell.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Tedford.
Here.
Wendus.
Here.
Your honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We're going to do Citizens Block. We do have to stop at 7:35. So we'll start there. We get in about five minutes. Citizens Forum. That's what I meant. Did I say Citizens Block?
Yeah.
That's going to be an interesting conversation. No one will guess what I was talking about today.
My name's Gennaro. I live right here on Vernon, Connecticut, on West Main. So I see that Connecticut picked up New York's bill, the House Judiciary 261 House Bill. They're going to try to pass, tampering with witnesses. What else? Enticing a child. The judge could just release you the following day if they want. There's people opposing against this House bill or judiciary bill. I mean, I don't know what people's concerns are. I don't know how many people do know about this bill, 261, but people need to go read it before they let it pass. It's being passed by Democrats, okay? It's a serious bill. It means I can go entice your child, take your child, do whatever I want with your child, and be released back into the street by the judge because they'll support the bond for 92% of it. Now, and there's more to that, a lot more to that. Also, y'all ever play chess? Who plays chess here? Y'all play chess? I play a lot of chess. Like, I actually play chess and watch TV and play chess and remember the board by memory, you know? So chess is, you know, a tactical game, a teachable game. You've got to know how to use your woman, you know? You've got to bring her out at the end. I consider that me like reading and studying and learning a lot more about certain things, you know? That's what I consider it. And last time, I was thinking, what I was speaking about, individuals like fathers that owe, you know, money for child support and stuff like that and that need a lot of help out here have been asking me what I could help them with, what laws do I know, and so forth. I believe a lot of them will be watching my video after this. I did tell them that I would explain to y'all a little bit in detail about child support. Child support is not obligatory at all. Yes, you can get arrested. Yes, you can go to jail. They will arrest you because you're incorporated. You have a final pledge with it. It's a contract. But when we look up and we start studying and reading, it says that there is no law that says that you have to pay the child support agency in order to take care of your children. Federal Code, 42 United States Code 1301D, it states, "D, nothing in this chapter shall be construed as authorizing any federal agent or representative in carrying out any of the provisions of this chapter to take charge of any child over the objection of either of the parents of such child or of the person standing in local parentis to such child." So it's not obligatory to pay child support. And a lot of people here in Vernon pay child support to the either services in Hartford or court because they'll go to jail. They'll lock them up, you know? Not only that, we're talking about you, sister, too. You know, you Spanish. We asking in the streets, what do you speak about these individuals within your Democratic Party about us? What do you do for us Latinos? You know, because you're up here. You represent us. That's how we look at it. You know how it is, family tight like that. We're tighter than probably, Latinos are probably tighter than any other race that I have known. So we want to know what you're doing for us, what are you speaking to them about us, and what could you do to benefit for us, you know? So if I can get a little bit more in clarification and details, what are you sitting there for? And I want to know, you know, because individuals in the street ask about you because they see my videos. I post them, you know? They just ask a lot of questions about you. And I tell them, I don't know you, but hopefully we get there one chance. It's just funny, man. You know, I work a lot, man, and I pay, I don't pay my taxes, though, because taxes are not obligatory. They're voluntary. You just have to submit a 1099A, let them know that, you know, you don't want to pay it, or you just don't make a certain amount to pay it. I work hard, a lot, pay ever source, probably 120 bucks on top for $66 of light. Not only that, cable company are robbing us. Our landlords are robbing us. What are they doing for us? What is people doing for us? Is the United States or the federal government playing and lying to us about what they're really doing, about Agenda 20, you know, 30 and stuff like that? Man, maybe. I don't know everybody personally, but what could y'all do for us, man? You know, I'm asking. Is it y'all putting your money in your pocket? Y'all making money for yourselves? You know, I'm just asking. You know, nobody contacts me. Nobody comes to the house no more, so I don't know. You know, I don't want to go to your house. I know I can. I have that right to knock on your door. I don't see you at the store no more. Usually come once in a blue moon, but next time I'll come and I'll speak some more, okay? I appreciate y'all for listening, all right? But let's get that 261 out the way, please. Let's not let that pass here in Connecticut. Let's not be New York, because we're not.
Thank you, Gennaro.
Appreciate you.
All right, so we're going to have to go over and do our public hearing. We'll go back to Citizens Forum and see if anybody else wants to talk in just a minute. All right, so we are, we're going to call the public hearing to order. Can the town clerk please read the legal notice?
This was posted on the outside bulletin board of Town Hall and on the town website on May 22, 2023. It was advertised in the Journal Inquirer on May 30, 2023. Legal notice, Town of Vernon, Town Council. This is to give notice that at its regular meeting of May 16, 2023, the Vernon Town Council scheduled a public hearing to be held on June 6, 2023, in the third floor council chambers of the Town Hall, Memorial Building, 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut. The public hearing will take place at 7:35 PM regarding an ordinance entitled Establishment of a Fair Rent Commission. Copies of the proposed action are available at the town clerk's office, 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut, and on the town's website, www.vernonct.gov/government/bids-and-contracts. Karen C. Daigle, Vernon Town Clerk, dated at Vernon, Connecticut, this 22nd, day of May, 2023.
Thank you. As many of you know, this is brought forward because of a state law that was passed that requires us to set up a fair rent commission. So, you know, many of, a lot of the things that this commission will deal with are things that are already happening in our court system. And so this is almost, to me, like a repeat of what's already happening. But, you know, we've been working on this since January, so in order to, you know, meet our statutory requirement, we are bringing this here tonight. And we will be looking for more members. Some people have already reached out to us to join this commission, and we will be looking for more. All right. Questions, comments? Actually, it's a comment section, not questions. Anyone want to make a comment on this? This is open to the public, too? No, it's, it's open for everybody. Go ahead, John.
Well, you sort of started, Mayor, through you. Thank you. This seems like a classic case of government solution in search of, solution in search of a problem. We have a housing court that I'm relatively familiar with, which is, which is put in place by the state to deal with just these types of issues. Now, certainly I, and I'm sure none of my colleagues, want to see anybody taken advantage of anybody paying unfair rents. But this is yet another state mandate that is pronounced from on high onto us here on the town. And I suppose I should be thankful that unlike the other mandates that we deal with during the budget season, this isn't going to cost the taxpayers of the Town of Vernon any money in the short term. But what it will do is it's another further encumbrance on private property. It's another further encumbrance on people trying to do business. I read constantly that we have a problem with housing in this state and a housing shortage. And I'm not sure what this does to encourage anybody to, to build more housing, to open more housing for rental, when this is yet another hurdle to doing business. There's a housing court in place for any abuses. There's a housing courts throughout the state, not just in Hartford, several locations throughout the state, which I know do a full days docket and a full days business, five days a week, 52 weeks a year. So now we're putting, the state is going to further mandate us to put this in. Now, unfortunately, we're over a barrel here because the state has mandated this, so I will probably reluctantly vote for it because I don't think we have much of a choice, but I just don't see the need for it. It seems like a redundancy and another imposition on people, some of whom are probably struggling to just make ends meet to pay their mortgage. And maybe they think renting out a room or renting out a floor is some way to make that mortgage and give some housing to some folks. I'm not sure what this does to encourage anybody to want to get involved in that business. I don't think there's a need for it. Again, I will reluctantly support it, but I just don't see the need for it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the previous speaker. I see this as no demonstrated need for this at all. No one has justified why Vernon should have such an organization when there are other means already available to solve these problems. As I understand the law on this, if we were to turn it down, the state could impose other language than the language that's before us tonight. Language that's before us tonight, I think, is more sensible than what the state originally proposed. So I will reluctantly vote for it, but I am opposed to the idea. I think it's wrong, and I don't think it solves any problems. Thank you.
Anybody else? This includes anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this or make a comment. Julie.
Mr. Mayor, are we just making comments now, or when are we asking questions?
This is comments right now.
Just the comments? Okay. I am wholly against this. I think it's an invasion of landlords' rights, and I'm not going to be approving this, but I do have some questions when the time comes. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm not for this at all. As a landlord myself, I feel this is an outreach of our government, overstepping their boundaries. My, my tenant's lease that they signed is a binding contract and between two parties, last I knew. And this is just another way to infiltrate and control what I can do or anything of the such. So I'm not for this at all, and I think I'm probably going to vote no. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ann.
I see this as a piece of legislation that's intended to help renters that are struggling because landowners are raising their rent at a time when they can do it and taking advantage of people. So while I'm sure I understand the position that you're taking that feels as though this is a intrusion of government, government control, I think there's a human side to this that we need to pay attention to, and that's the intent. Now, it appears to me that, and I'm not sure about this, that I just heard that you have altered somewhat the state legislation that was put in place and that you can do this. I know you can make local legislation more strict, but it should, so I don't know if that's what this has done. I didn't compare the state statute with what you have, the 14 or 15 points you have here. But if there's opportunity for us to lighten it to, so that you're happier with it, although we do have to pass it, but I think we have to keep in mind the intent, which is that there are people who are struggling and they don't have anybody to go to other than, the housing court takes a long time and they don't get a quick response. So this, this gives them the local personal touch that they might be able to use. Thank you.
Just do your name again.
Disagree with it because what it does, it opens up the doors for tenants to abuse the landlords. Not only that, it gives the government jurisdiction over the landlord, over their own property that they own and pay taxes for. My father was a landlord, and when I seen the guy upstairs take advantage of my father for eight months, it wasn't right because they told him what he had to do. So he had to get rid of one of his properties because he just didn't want to deal with it, you know? This is just an intrusion to step in and boundaries and take the rights away from landlords that should not be right. It shouldn't be. Mayor, it shouldn't be. I shouldn't be able to go to your house and tell you what to do when you paid for it. It shouldn't be like that. If this happens, what you're saying is, no disrespect to you, ma'am. If they're lazy and they don't want to go to work because there's plenty of jobs out there, then they're lazy because I ate from the garbage can with my wife that I live right now. I hop house to house. I got up, I had to, I had to switch my mind thinking, and I had to go to work because I couldn't keep abusing my landlord because my landlord was a good person, okay? So I oppose this bill, or whatever it is that you're calling it, because it's abuse towards the landlord. You might as well call DCF on the tenants now for the abuse against the landlords.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments on the ordinance?
Thank you.
Ariana.
Just like any sort of investment that you make, you know, if I were to buy a mutual fund, right, those are incredibly regulated because it's an investment. There is risk when we invest in these types of things. Becoming a, an owner of a property and renting that out is inherently risky. We need to make sure that there are safeguards and protections for both sides because if you're a good landlord, you won't have to worry about your tenant coming in and, you know, abusing these things because a happy tenant is going to be just as kind and considerate to their living space as anyone else would if they owned the property. It keeps people responsible for the agreement that they've made. And again, the human element, it is not appropriate to take advantage of individuals by charging absorbent amounts of money for an establishment or dwelling that has not changed or has not been bettered or has not been made safe. We need to think about the folks that are in these positions where they want to be heard and they would like to have an amicable conversation with someone where they feel like they're a victim. I understand that it feels like there could be a lot of abuse in these sorts of situations, and that's well and good in terms of if you want to come at it from that angle. I think that the optimistic side of me wants to believe that we can all find the human aspect of it and take care of one another in those ways. So I understand that we have concerns, but I think that we need to see where this goes and adjust accordingly. Thank you.
Hold on, Mike, you want one, sorry. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this proposed ordinance? Laura.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I agree with Councilmember O'Connell when there are many other things already in place that the, the tenant and the landlord have to go through before they even come here. So this is just another hurdle that they have to go through. And I probably will support it only because I know that if we don't put something in place, the state will put something in place for us. And at least we have control of what it looks like right now. So I, like I said, very tentatively, I'll support it only because I don't want it to be worse than it is. I know we have to have this in place because it's mandated. Thank you.
Just a name and address.
I'm Brian Edwards. I live in Enfield, Connecticut, 5 Pinewood. My family has been in business in this town for over 40 years. We own a lot of rental property here in Rockville section of town. Many of you know who I am already. This ordinance only crossed my desk this afternoon, so I've been real well versed in it, but I read it quickly, and it scared me. It scared me on a lot of different levels because I work very hard every single day on my properties to try to keep my business, my potential trouble off of your all desks, okay? I work very hard to try to do that. I have no control as a landlord of a tenant who wants to make a complaint to a fair housing commission or anyone else. I have no control over that. I can keep my property as nice as any property in town, but any one of you who rents at any time can make a complaint about anything, and I have absolutely no control over that. To claim that the rent doesn't justify the establishment that the individual lives in, well, you know, there are other processes in place that can handle that. If you don't want to pay your rent, and you don't pay your rent, then there is a legal process already in place called the eviction process. And those processes, the way that works, if you've never been through it, is you go to the court, you can see it from here across the street, on a Friday morning, and you sit with a, I can refer to as a housing specialist. And that housing specialist works out a situation between the landlord and the tenant. You work out that deal, you create a stipulated agreement, and the tenant agrees to certain terms, and the landlord agrees to certain terms. It could be a reduction in rents, it can be a payment program. There's a lot of options on the table at that point. And that becomes a stipulated agreement that then the tenant will work with the landlord and they will work, if there's repair issues, whatever the case may be, will fall under those circumstances. And that's how we handle this. We don't need an extra mechanism in the way that could stop the eviction process, could pause the eviction process, because it's already timely and costly enough on the property owner when costs are rising, and we all know this, all across the board. So I please, I ask you, I obviously oppose it, but I need you to reconsider the issues within the ordinance. I don't understand fully why we would support something that the state theoretically is going to put in place anyways. I don't, that's, that's foreign to me. If there's some justification behind that, I'd like to know more about it, and I think we could all just pause a moment and discuss these issues. And let's find out what that's all about. My understanding is that the state of Connecticut allows you to create this ordinance. You don't have to pass the ordinance. You don't have to. So let's pause, let's consider this. I own my property in Rockville. I don't own property on the other side of Vernon. Their rents are much higher in some places out there. I understand that this ordinance suggests certain zones that are labeled A, B, C, D. Well, you guys are stepping into a little bit of some murky area there, discriminational issues. If I have a brand new building here in Rockville and it's in a, say, a D section of town, shouldn't I be allowed to get the maximum rent that, say, perhaps apartments over there at mansions at Hockenheim get? I pay just as much as he did to build it. It's costing me that much to run it. So yes, inherent risk when you invest? Yes, that's true. Believe me, we live those risks every single day. We really do. I applaud you for looking at the situation. I've heard the stories as well where tenants suddenly come home and they've got a rent that's jacked up real high. We don't do that. I'll give you some numbers real quick, and then I'll say. I got two bedroom apartments out there right now that are around $875 a month. Pay your own utilities, that's pretty low. If you've been online, you're going to see 11, 12, 1300. But I know where I'm at, and I know what I offer, I know what they are. So it's not across the board that every property owner is taking advantage of tenants, but you're giving the opportunity to the tenant to say, I'm being taken advantage of, regardless of whether or not they are. So please reconsider this. Give this at least a little bit more thought and allow for some more public comment, and then let's move forward in a real intelligent direction. Thank you for your time, and thank you for having me.
Right, and you missed the beginning. You guys came in a little late, but the only reason we're doing this is state law was passed. We have to have it in place by July 1.
You do.
They took it out of our hands.
I understand. I don't know why that is, but I, yeah, okay. Thank you for listening.
Anybody else? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Robert Palios.
You got to use the microphone, and I need your, your name and address.
I'm Robert Palios. My address is Phoenix Street in Vernon.
Number.
Number?
Number, Phoenix.
144.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I did get here a little late, so the criteria or permission we had was to ask questions and to comment, make comments. Can I ask questions as well?
It's a comment section. This is for comments.
That's what I didn't know.
If you want to sit, you can sit and use the microphone on the desk. It's up to you.
I'll go back.
No, 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 right here. If you want to make a comment, you can do it on this mic. Oh, it's a, it's a comment section. All right. Anybody else for first time? Mike, for a second time.
Through you, Mayor, thank you. I'd just like to comment on the landlords going up on the rent because they can't. I think that's ridiculous. As I said, I'm a landlord in town as well, and I don't get anywhere near what I could get for my rentals, even though they're very nice. I, everything, in case you all haven't noticed, everything has gone through the roof. My homeowner's insurance on my house goes up on average of 300 a year every time it renews. My water bill's never under $300 for a two-family house, all right? Everything has gone up and up. I finally had to go up on my rent that I was charging my tenant because I can't keep, you know, keep, keep afloat. I'm going backwards on it. So everything is going up, and it forces the landlords to go up on the rents. Now, if people can't afford this, you know, then so be it. I feel, I feel sorry for them, but Vernon does for the population that we have. We have a lot of affordable housing buildings in our town that are based on your income. And they can apply to those places there, and they can actually get based on a percentage of their income so they can, you know, live more comfortably. But for a private homeowner that is renting, to sit there and say, we're going up on a rent just because we can go up on it, no, we're being forced to go up on it because of what is happening with everything else around us that's going through the roof. So, and I was forced to go up for the first time in 11 years. So, you know, again, this is an outreach from my government, and I'm not for it whatsoever, and I totally will stand against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? One of the things I just want to, you know, just kind of press is when it's determination of excessive rent, in determining whether a rental charge or a proposed increase in rental charge is so excessive, with due regard to all circumstances, has to be harsh and unconscionable. I mean, those are some big words there, and I just wanted everybody to keep that in mind when we, when we start talking about that. And, you know, when we start talking about leases and contracts and stuff, you know, if you have a lease or a contract, you know, I think you should abide by the lease or contract. But again, I think this belongs in the court. It doesn't belong with some volunteers in town. And we are still, like I said, we are looking for volunteers to be part of, of this commission. So I'm hoping that anybody listening that would like to be part can put an application in. All right. Any more questions? Comments? I meant comments.
I noticed one town that's talking about theirs as well, and they, on their commission, I noticed one town that's talking about theirs as well, and they, on their commission, they're going to have a homeowner, well, a renter rather, and a landlord. So I don't know if that helps broaden the people that are on your commission. But I have a concern of duplication. And since I can't ask the question...
We have, we're going to have an opportunity.
Okay, thanks.
All right, and what's that? Did you ask? No, okay. Yeah, as you know, we always talk about the ordinance a little further on before we take the vote. But we do have a couple volunteers who have stepped up, and again, we are looking for a couple more. And, you know, when we say this isn't going to cost us anything, and anytime that we need attorneys, we have to pay for those attorneys as part of this commission. And, you know, we want to make sure that we keep an eye on it. And Matt Hellman is going to be the town representative for this commission, because each commission has an employee that is part of that. And Matt stepped up and volunteered to be the town representative on the commission. He doesn't vote, but he'll make sure that we follow the laws and everything. And Matt used to be an attorney, which makes it very good. We can make sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Any more questions or comment, or keep saying questions? Any more comments? No? All right. I'm going to close, or I'm going to adjourn the public hearing and move back to the regular meeting. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak at Citizens Forum? Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close Citizens Forum. We're going to hold executive session till the end. I have a couple of reminders for everybody. The Miracle Field Groundbreaking is going to be June 15 at 3:00 p.m., and it's going to be at Northeast School, right where the field is going to be. The 2023 Rockville High School graduation is June 14, 6:00 p.m. at Rockville High School in the courtyard. Tickets and parking passes distributed at the last town council meeting. And you know what's not on here? Your event on, or either one of you, the event on Saturday. Go ahead, tell us about it.
Yeah, Friends of Valley Falls will have an open house on Saturday, June 10, from 1 to 4.
Excellent, thank you.
And everybody's invited, please come. Thanks.
I knew it was there, I just, it wasn't written down, so I figured it'd be easier that way. All right, July in the Sky, July 11, Henry Park, Central Park, beginning at 6:00 p.m. fireworks are at dark. And the National Night Out, August 1, 5 to 8:00 p.m. in the former Aladdin Hall parking lot. This year is the 40th anniversary for National Night Out. And that's all I have. So let's move on to consent. Ryan?
Mr. Mayor, motion to move the consent agenda as written.
Seconded by Laura. Are we pulling any? Nope, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Let's go on to new business number one.
Mr. Mayor, the town council authorizes the purchase of an in-ground vehicle lift for the Vernon Police Department Maintenance Garage, excuse me, from Omer USA Inc. in an amount not to exceed $13,816.60.
Second.
Who seconded that? Mary Ann? Hold on one second. Hold on one second. Want to make sure, we didn't say where the money's coming from, so I want to make sure we cover that base. Actually, I'm... We have to add that? All right, we got to add in that, this is for the second or two, we have to add in that the funds will come from the general fund? What kind of... From the general fund?
Also says in-ground, and when you look at...
That's all right, just, let's do this, and then we'll talk about it. Is it an in-ground system?
No.
Okay, so let's, you know, we're going to, you know, we're going to reread the motion, and we're going to get rid of in-ground. Okay?
Let's start again.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, the town council authorizes the purchase of a vehicle lift for the Vernon Police Department Maintenance Garage from Omer USA Inc. in an amount not to exceed $13,816.60, an additional appropriation from the general fund.
Second.
Seconded by Mary Ann? Okay. So basically, what this is, is our lift broke at the police department, and we have a mechanic specifically there who works on the police cars. And I remember at one point, we decided to move the mechanic down to Public Works, which turned into a nightmare because we had to tow cars down there. And if we didn't have a lift there, we'd end up doing the same thing. So it's kind of an emergency. We got to fix this lift so we can get the work done at the police department. Questions? And they did, they got three bids, right? Yes. All right, any questions? Brian?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. Why did you pick this specific lift?
Through the mayor. The size of the bay kind of limits the lift we can put in there. The original lift was actually built into the building when the building was constructed in '78.
Okay. So 7,700 pounds? A police vehicle weighs, how much?
They weigh 5,600.
That's it, okay. So this, there's not going to be a problem then?
No.
Bigger vehicles go down to Public Works then? Okay.
Yes.
The current lift lifts how much? If it worked?
Through your mayor, the current lift lifts, it is an 8,000 pound lift.
Okay, so you're not really losing anything there. Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. The, does this cost include the removal of the old and the installation of the new, or is this just to purchase the lift?
Through your mayor, the, this lift will be installed by us at Public Works. The original lift will be decommissioned and pulled out. Yeah, in-house. Okay. Julie?
Good evening, thank you for coming. Just a question, Councilwoman Bush said the lift, is that stationary? Is it bolted into the ground in one place? You can't move it to a different location?
Through your mayor, yes, it will be bolted to the ground.
So it'll only be in one bay area?
Yes.
And so that's enough for the usage that you're going to need it for compared to before?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor?
No, no.
Arianna?
Thank you, through you.
Let me see your hand.
It's okay, I was kind of like, I don't know if I want to ask this or not. Got a question. For this specific lift, it looks like it's a scissor, a double scissor lift. Is this different from the in-ground system in the sense that it's not going to, like, it's something we're going to put on top of the concrete, so it's going to be sort of easier to maintain, remove, and take care of, I guess?
Through your mayor, yes, it will be bounded on top of the ground. It won't be in-ground, and it won't be subject to the saltwater and stuff leaking off the cars and getting into the ground and rusting the lift.
Thank you. And I do see that there's an additional three-power, optional three-phase power supply. Was that something that was not necessary? Is that included, and I just didn't see it on the, on the sheet?
We have electricians that we use. If that's the case, we'll just have them put that in.
Okay, wonderful. And then just, lastly, thank you very much for including pictures into the report. Very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Terry?
Through you. Thank you for coming. So in the proposal, it says the original in-ground lift, which we took out, was installed in 1978. But it says that the current lift is embedded into the concrete floor, so the size of the bay and the closeness, sundays, putting removal and replacement are not a viable option. So are you going to be able to take the concrete, I guess that's, I think you understand my question?
Yes, thank you, through the mayor. The lift that is currently in the facility now will be abandoned in place. The head that actually sits underneath the vehicle will be removed, and then the mast will remain in the ground, and any kind of hydraulic fluid will be removed from the system. So there, because the police station will still be in use and it's not being abandoned, the lift can remain in the ground as is. It'd be very difficult to get in there and actually remove it. That's why we chose to go with the scissor lift and put it above ground, which will also be more environmentally friendly.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous? Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the town council, consistent with the Town of Vernon Personnel Rules and Regulations, Section 3.7, 3.19, and 5.3B3, hereby authorizes that all non-union, full-time, permanent, part-time, and part-time employees be given a general wage increase of 2% effective July 1, 2023.
Seconded by Laura. As you guys know, this was in our budget that we approved, and we always vote on it just before July. So, any questions? All those in favor? Unanimous? Brian?
Mr. Mayor, by the authority granted in Connecticut General State Statutes 12-165, entitled Municipal Suspense Tax Book, the town council approves the placement of properties totaling $215,702.45 contained on the suspense tax ledger report as provided by Terry Jarni, Collector of Revenue dated May 2023, onto the suspense tax ledger.
Seconded by Mary Ann. Terry, you want to just explain what this is, so we all understand?
Is this, is it on?
It is now.
Thank you. Good evening, Terry Jarni, Collector of Revenue.
Hold on, did they turn the mic? Tap it and see if it works. There you go.
Good evening. The suspense list is required annually per State Statute 12-165. It's, for the most part, an accounting function, which takes collectibles that we don't believe are going to be paid anytime soon, if at all, and puts them into no longer being an asset of the town. It's pretty much, you know, a financial move. It's anybody who may have dissolved their business, may have moved, declared bankruptcy, if they're deceased, transfer of ownership at tax sale, if we do have an underbid, can create an issue where we're no longer going to be collecting those taxes. The Superior Court can also order liens to be extinguished, and that would happen occasionally, mostly with a mobile home that would be removed in those situations. The, in the office of the collector, a clerk has been working on this for the better part of the last month, and she has done multiple inquiries trying to locate the individuals in this suspense list. She's looked at the DMV sites, the Department of Motor Vehicles, to see if people have updated their addresses, or if they still have a registered vehicle anywhere in any other town. You're required within 48 hours of moving to change your address for your registration. And she's finding that many of these people still have the old address and no longer have registered vehicles. To the best of our knowledge, they don't have a vehicle coming up on the upcoming 2022 grand list. She's also Googled names, checked dates of births, checked the monthly death reports from the town clerk's office, looked up individuals on the Connecticut Business Site to see if their businesses are active or inactive. Sometimes we can find email addresses and phone numbers from the Connecticut Business Site from when they originally established their LLC, and she's been trying to contact them through those means. Also, anybody who has paid online through Point and Pay or any other online service in the past, their email address is usually available to us through the site, and she's been reaching out and contacting the delinquent taxpayers through the emails. So anybody that she's managed to find, perhaps some of them have paid, but others were not included in this list, if she can find them.
All right, thank you. Questions? Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Jarni, thank you for coming tonight. I do notice the list goes back to 2017, so everything before then is like completely written off as a bad debt, so to speak, I guess.
The motor vehicles, through you, Mr. Mayor, the motor vehicles prior to '17, if we don't feel they're collectible, then they have already been put on suspense previously. We still are collecting them. In 2017, the Department of Motor Vehicles did a conversion, and any records that were two years old or further back, they took them out of their system for being reported as delinquent taxes, as if, as if they never existed. So now what we're doing is we're taking some of these older bills that are, that are on suspense, that have been there for a number of years. And she's researching and finding what the DMV calls a civils number, the number they've, they've linked to your identity. And she's flagging these new civil numbers onto the old bills and actually catching through the net some of these people. And she's doing a fantastic job with delinquent tax collections. So just because you see it on this list doesn't mean that it's not going to get paid. It's just we can't find them. But if, but if they try to re-register, we're going to get them.
Good, good. Well, thank you very, good job on your part and her part for doing that. I know it's got to be like hard work, you know, grueling work, but undertaken.
Through the mayor, I have a new clerk who started October 27, and she was amazed to see that people don't always pay their taxes. Like, when I started here, I didn't know it was an option. To the person who comes in only and says, "I'm only here to pay my taxes because I have to register," many of us didn't know that was an option. And she's done a wonderful job of finding some people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Julie?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Jarni. I just have a question. When, when you do, let's say, collect a third of that, and it's already written off from an asset, how does the town notate that? What, what does it come in as?
It, it's a tax payment. It gets, on my 15-year report, at the end of the year, there will be a function to move it out of the suspense feature and put it back in as, as something that's been collected. It's, it's pretty much just an accounting function, but we're not counting on this as, as a receivable at this point, once it goes into suspense. But we bring it back in when we collect it.
So does the money go to the general fund, or what, what happens to it?
Once they collect it, it goes into the general fund, yeah.
It does. All right, thank you.
Mary Ann?
Thanks, Terry. You're doing a great job. And you, you said DMV dropped them, huh?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. When they did their conversion, they held on to two years' worth of names if you weren't a current registered vehicle owner. a current registered vehicle owner. They held you for two years, but anybody older than that back was scrubbed from their system.
Will they take an update on that, or no?
Manually. We research, find them, and get information on them. We may contact other towns and say, "Can you help us out? We see they're in your town now. Do you have any information you can provide us?" Once we can get ahold of that DMV civils number, that's what they've assigned you, then we can place that on your account and place a new vehicle number to your name and put you on manually as a stop.
Wow. Thank you. I see your back taxes collection rate increasing here. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you. Good night.
All right, Brian? Ordinance?
I'll read that.
Oh, Julie? Looking the wrong way. Laura, go ahead.
The Town Council, consistent with Chapter 5, Section 4 and 6 of the Vernon Town Charter, hereby moves the following ordinance. Ordinance number blank, and ordinance entitled Establishment of a Fair Rent Commission.
Seconded by Mary Ann. All right, questions? Mary Ann?
Okay. If a complaint is made to the Fair Rent Commission, is it then, then do they, can they go to the housing court again, or does it have to go to Superior?
I think it can end up going to court afterwards, yeah.
To which one, Superior or the housing court?
To the housing court.
Wow, that's a duplication. Okay, thanks.
You gotta understand, I mean, with what governments did through COVID, landlords had, some of these landlords haven't been paid in years, and it's pretty drastic. But, yeah, it's Superior Court is, it's housing court, yeah, because it's at Superior Court, yep. But again, I just want to make sure you guys understand, I mean, harsh and unconscionable. I mean, it's gotta be pretty, kinda in your face, and, you know, a lot of that's gonna, you know, be defined by the courts or defined by the dictionary as to what represents that. There's a whole list of items underneath that can be considered too, but, you know, again, Matt's gonna be part of that, and Matt's gonna essentially make sure that, you know, we're following the law. And Lou's been part of this whole ordinance as well, because he had to go through the state law and read through the whole thing. Anne?
Well, first, there was a member of the audience from the public hearing that wanted to ask some questions. How do you want to address that?
This is for us to ask. This is our questions to ask.
Right, I know that, but...
They can make a comment.
But he couldn't ask questions?
It was the comment section.
Well, if he had questions, how does he ask them?
Trust me, I understand that. I'm gonna actually meet with him after we're done here and answer as many of his questions as I can.
I was just gonna suggest he could give me his questions, and I could ask them, if you want to do it that way.
No, we're not gonna set that precedent.
Okay. So, all right. My question. In the determination of excessive rent, these number of items, 13 items, so is that taken directly from the legislation that was passed, or?
These were the things...
These have changed.
What's that?
This is a changed version, or?
There's very, there's two items that I changed, and it's item one and two, I changed something very minor in both. It says the market value rents charged for the same number of rooms in, I believe I had other housing, I put similar housing, because you can't compare houses in different parts of the town and say that they all should be the same. And then the other one, I also put in that, you know, we have a lot of tenants who create a lot of damage, and that needs to be taken into account as well, and that was added in to the end of number two. And the last change that we did is down in the commission orders after a hearing, it says the rent during said period shall be, uh, no, I'm missing that. It's, hold on a second, I gotta find it. The commission has a right to, you know, we can use attorneys during the commission, and basically, we want to make sure that there's a weigh-in from the town side before they go spending money on attorneys. So we want to be brought up to date prior to that meeting, that they want to bring attorneys into the meeting, because that can become pretty costly if they have an attorney each time. Thankfully, Matt's an attorney, and so he can, you know, help us out there, but we do want to make sure that, you know, we're not getting out of control as well.
So just as a follow-up, then, the question came up about what you, the mayes and the shals. So is it a shal that you have to establish a commission, and the rest of the powers and authority apparently may make studies that they're mayes? So they aren't required at any point to do any of this?
This commission is required.
Right, that's what I meant. It's, it must be a shal to establish the commission, and the powers and authority is a may. So anything within the powers and authority, they don't have to apply, they can apply, if they want to. Okay. And then the last part, so in making the changes, you, did the, does the legislation allow for that, to make changes, or did they determine that these are just model regulations? You can do what you want?
They had a model that came out, but we went back to the statutes themselves. And, you know, it's great that somebody wants to come out with a model, but then, you know, one word basically doesn't, you know, it basically puts everything in the same category, and that's not true. Because, you know, and Mr. Edwards said that when he came up front here, you know, you can't compare one to the other, you know, it's gotta be similar, and...
No, I see what you did, and I agree with the point.
And that's stuff we look at, because, you know, we have to defend that in court, the Town of Vernon. So we're looking through this, we're gonna, how do we defend that? And that's why we put that word in there, because we can defend that now. But, you know, I can't remember a case that has been, a complaint that's been made to my office that would fit under this. But understand, we have a lot of landlords from out of state. They buy the building, and pretty much that's the last time you hear from them.
Right.
You know? And landlords in town get a complaint, they can go right and fix them. We have to track people down, even though we have an ordinance that says they have to leave their phone number and stuff. And so, you know, we deal with, most of the landlords that own a lot of properties, you know, we have pretty good communication with them, and they work well with our building department. And, you know, but we do have the people that, they bought it for dirt cheap and did very little to it, and they're renting it out, and all they want's the money, nothing more.
Yeah, I know.
So...
Yep. So it's okay to make the changes that you made?
I, the attorney was the one that did the whole paperwork, so, yep.
Okay. All right, through you, Your Honor, you're okay with it, Lou?
Through the mayor. The statute sets some minimum items that have to be in every ordinance. There have been several model ordinances drafted, and many communities have expanded upon the minimum requirements. We tried to keep this ordinance very close to what was actually in the statute. And I believe, you know, I haven't read the legislative intent on this statute, but what struck me when I read it was, well, if they wanted every community with over 25,000 residents to have a fair rent commission, why didn't they just state that's what shall happen and create a statute that says how it's governed? Well, I think what the legislature in their wisdom wanted to do was give council members, governing bodies, a little leeway in how their commission is to be run, how many people are to be on it, how it is to conduct its business. So that's where, you know, there was, there's certain minimum requirements that I am satisfied that this ordinance meets. And then there are some additional items in here, one of which happens to be a requirement that, prior to going before the Fair Rent Commission, the landlord and the tenant have to participate in a mediation session with a town staff member. And that's modeled after housing court. That's what happens in housing court before a case goes to trial, it goes before a mediator, and 90% of the cases settle in mediation. So that's an example of where we went a little bit beyond what was required in the state statute, to try to make it more workable for this community.
Thank you.
Welcome. This used to be in just the big communities, and when I was in the Senate and I was reading up on this, you know, one of the communities, New Haven, basically said you could be arrested, okay? Arrested for not showing up at the, at these meetings. And, you know, when I started asking questions about it, there was no answers. And then I asked, who's gonna arrest them? The volunteers on the committee? Again, no answers. I mean, I think that one goes a little too far, especially when that, if you gotta talk about arresting somebody, then they should be in the courts, they shouldn't be in any housing, any commission, any fair housing commission. All right. Bill?
Through you, Your Honor. I'd just like to be sure that my understanding is correct about if this council rejected this ordinance, that the state would have the right to enforce some other version of it on us. Is that legally correct?
Yes, through the mayor.
And is it likely?
Yes. Yes.
Anything could happen, but the most likely scenario would be that Vernon would be open to a court action in which a judge would impose it upon the community.
I see. So if we reject this, we're in for even more trouble than if we approve it. I, I, I guess I have to say I'll reluctantly vote for it, but I'm against this whole idea. I think the state ramming these ideas down our throats is wrong. Thank you.
Julie?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's like mission creep, because this starts out here, and then it goes further, and then they start exacting more pain from everybody. Through you, Your Honor. Lou, and the determination of the rental charge is so excessive, with due regard as to be, you know, as to be harsh and unconscionable, do they have legal terminology for that that is applying here, or are these just the regular, everyday people-on-the-street words that they put in here?
You, there's been very little case law on this, and this was asked by the mayor when this first came up, and I was able to find a couple of cases that simply cite back to the 13 criteria that are within the statute and are also within our ordinance. And that's how they, you look at those 13 factors and determine whether or not, under the circumstances, the rent is harsh and unconscionable.
So if a landlord disagrees with that terminology under those 13 propositions there, and doesn't want to attend the commission, period, you know, saying, you know, "I don't agree with this," where does he, he has to go right to Superior Court, which, are you telling me Superior Court is housing court? Is that what I'm to understand?
Any ruling, any order of the Fair Rent Commission can be appealed to Superior Court.
But prior to that, if they say, "I don't want to listen to you, Fair Housing Commission, because I don't agree that you can come up with what's harsh and unconscionable," what is, what do they do?
Well, they can, they can take that position, but it may result in an adverse decision from the Fair Rent Commission, which they'll in turn have to take to Superior Court.
Okay, so what path does that landlord and the Fair Rent Commission people take? Or I guess the landlord. He comes in, he, someone lodged a complaint that he's harsh and unconscionable, excessive rent. What trumps what? The housing court or the fair house, fair?
Don't forget, it's, before that happens, they're gonna meet with Matt, and they're gonna try to mediate prior to actually going to the committee.
But can the renter simultaneously also go to housing court, as Mr. Edwards said, and hold up the whole works, gum up the whole works by meeting with Mr. Hellman, but also applying to the housing court?
I think the court's gonna provide us...
No, the tenant has to go through the process, which is going to the Fair Rent Commission first. Then, if the tenant's not happy with the decision of the Fair Rent Commission, well, either the tenant or the landlord has a right to appeal to the Superior Court.
So does the housing court clerks tell a prospective renter that they have to go to their local town fair commission first? Rent commission first? Okay, so that leads me to when they're receiving complaints. How are they receiving complaints? Is it an email to the mayor? Is it an email to Mr. Hellman? Is there an application? What starts that?
I think you have wide latitude in how that procedure is set for Vernon. You can have it directed to a particular department head.
And then...
We still, Julie, we still have to put that part together. So this is just the setting of it, and then we're gonna create how to make the complaints.
Okay. Thank you, sir. It says the commission in powers and authority, the commission for such purposes may compel the intenence of persons. How do they compel? Are they serving them through a marshal?
That's the question that came up with the mayor. They do have the authority under state statute to issue subpoenas, and if somebody ignores a subpoena, the process to compel somebody to attend would be to go before a Superior Court judge and get an order of capias issued by that judge.
So then, aren't you then bypassing your fair, what is this called? Fair Rent Commission if they serve them and they don't?
No, the judge can order them to show up at our commission.
At fair, all right.
Right.
If Mr. Wendus has a contract for rent, and there's the Fair Housing Commission, and there, the commission determines that it's harsh and unconscionable, by, how is a legal contract trumped by the commission statewide and federal law-wise? Is there a difference there?
Well, the context that this most often comes up in is, at least from the communities that I've spoken to that have had these, is when it comes up for lease renewal, you know, there's a lease renewal and the rent goes up $100 a month, and someone thinks that's unfair, and that's how it ends up before the commission. It's an unusual circumstance where a signed lease would end up before the commission, and I would think there'd be a pretty compelling argument on the part of the commission to not change that rent or find it harsh and unconscionable, since there was a meeting of the minds on it in a contract. But having said that, it's technically possible, and it's possible because the state statute authorizes it.
And state statute trumps a contract? So if they have a contract, and two months into it, Mr. Renter says, you know, "I'm being charged, that was excessive, and now I'm gonna go to the Fair Rent Commission."
Yeah, that's, you know, that happens in a number of circumstances where contract, state statutes dictate contract terms, or...
Lou, I'm just gonna follow up on Julie real quick. If somebody brings in, and there's a lease, a contract between the parties, and it goes to Matt, Matt sees it, and they're demanding that they want to go before the commission... to Matt, Matt sees it, and they're demanding that they want to go before the commission, it doesn't mean the commission's going to say, hey, this is void. I mean, it's a contract, and we should be looking at it as a contract. But I'm hoping we never see anything like that because that doesn't belong in this commission.
Right.
You know, what belongs in the commission is, you know, you're halfway through the contract, and the landlord decides to raise your rent by $2,000 a month. That belongs at the commission.
Okay. So?
Actually, it belongs in court.
So it appears to me that this Fair Rent Commission is just another bureaucratic wall from the housing court. And I know it was said previously that renters, you know, are backed up in the housing court. But I guess that begs the question that, or I guess it points out, well, if the housing courts are backed up, so are family courts. So what, why aren't they prioritizing, are they going to start putting family courts in the town of Vernon to take care of the backlog of cases there where you're involving the health and safety of children? So you can't really use the fact that the housing court is backed up. That's, that's a problem, an entirely different problem because, as Mr. Wendus said, landlords are not out there, there's, just like there's always a bad apple, 90% of them are really good. They've incurred the inflationary situation, the bad market, high costs, even construction costs for any, anything they have to do. And that's driven up the cost of the rents there. They need to pay their bills, too. And we certainly have seen the amount of problems that renters have given landlords where they just stop paying the rent, they destroy the property, and the courts do nothing about it, and the landlord's left high and dry. So I don't think that's a good excuse to just say that, you know, you have this other layer of bureaucracy just because the housing court is backed up, or, you know, the renters have to be treated fairly. Well, so do the landlords have to be treated fairly. Lou, after the person feels that, and I'm assuming it's the landlord, wants to aggrieved and can go to the Superior Court, what are they appealing? What law or what are they going to the Superior Court to say that the fair commission wasn't justified in their actions? Like, what are they applying for or appealing for under what?
They'd, through the mayor, they would appeal the ruling of the Fair Rent Commission. Presumably, the Fair Rent Commission would have either changed the rent or suspended the rent, and they would be appealing that decision. And the trial court judge would essentially have what's called de novo review, which means it's, it's not like an appeal, you don't have to find an error of law. It's essentially a retrying of the case, and the judge will use the same standard, the harsh and unconscionable standard, and decide whether or not he or she agrees with the ruling of the Fair Rent Commission.
And is there involved in that? Who's paying the attorney fees if the landlord wins his case? And I know I keep saying the landlord or the renter is, you know, does it, is there specific guidelines on going through this entire expense and not getting paid back, you know, needlessly?
Generally speaking, each side would pay their own counsel fees.
Okay. So then, on the penalties and offenses, Jeff hears us to pay any subpoena order or decision. Shelby, fine not less than $25, not more than $100 for each offense. Who, they have the authority to fine them, and then are they, is this Fair Rent Commission putting this on the owner's credit report? How, is this going to be like a lien on their property or a lien on their credit report? You know, where does it go from there when you're being fined and you're not paying because you're going through this whole situation?
Through the mayor. The only time I believe the fine would come into play is if the landlord violated or disregarded an order of the Fair Rent Commission. Really, the Fair Rent Commission itself, when it has a matter before it, really only has the authority to either change the rent or suspend the payment of rent. If, if a landlord violates an order of the Fair Rent Commission, then the fine would come into play, and it would be just like any other fine, that a violation of an ordinance would carry its appealable to the Superior Court. And it typically, well, unless you get it converted to a judgment, it typically does not become a lien on the property.
Okay. And just in that same line, the escrow, who's holding this escrow? Is there interest on the escrow? And who has the authority to release this escrow or take the monies?
Through the mayor, it would, the escrow would be held by the town of Vernon, and the Fair Rent Commission would have the authority to release or continue to hold the escrow.
I just, I'm totally against this. I'm going to vote no. I, I do not like the bureaucracy of this, and I think it puts even neighbors against, pits neighbors against neighbors that are on this commission to make these decisions against each other. So I'm going to vote no. Thank you, Your Honor.
Terry?
Thank you, through you. Turn my mic off, sorry. So it says here, under the commission orders after hearing, that the rent during said period shall be paid to the commission to be held in escrow by the commission. So maybe this is a question for Matt or for both of you guys. So say no one pays the rent. Is it up to Matt or is it up to the town to say, hey, you haven't paid? So does that put the town in any jeopardy for not collecting this rent to have it put in escrow?
You mean, if they're supposed to pay it to the commission, and the person doesn't pay it to the commission? It's a non-payment. That's what it breaks down to.
So Matt needs like?
So they're not living up to what the commission said.
Okay. So the commission in no way will be held responsible for not, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
If I may, Mayor, the not, filing a complaint with the Fair Rent Commission is not a defense to not, it doesn't give you the license to not pay your rent. If you don't pay your rent, your landlord can still bring a summary process action in housing court for eviction.
Mike?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, Lou. I got a few questions for you here. Oh, boy. Okay. It says here that this is a volunteer positions, but they are entitled to reimbursement for expenses incurred. Who is paying for these expenses and who is reimbursing them?
Well, I'm going to answer that one because basically that's just put in there because that's what the statute says. But it's going to be up to the town to determine if it's a reimbursable expense.
Is it true that the mobile homes are exempt?
No, mobile homes are specifically included.
Okay. Okay. I was checking that. Okay, that was already answered through the subpoenas. I just, help me understand, who and what qualifications does the commission have to determine what the fair and equitable rent market should be? Are there just average people like us doing average jobs that are volunteering for the service? And what qualifications would they have over me or anybody else in here to determine what equitable rent is?
Through the mayor, I, you know, it's in each governing body's discretion to appoint people who they feel are qualified to serve on this particular commission. The state statute does not set any qualifications.
Boy, that's wonderful. So who in the commission, again, these are all volunteers, you know, Joe Smo is out there in the community, who's going to be an actual in charging of, because I'm seeing here quite frequently that they can actually hold rent, you know, for lack of payment, if something, if they're complaining about damage and other stuff, and they can hold the actual rent payments and stuff until they're satisfied, whatever, so on and so forth. Who's going to be, is it going to be somebody put in charge of actual, there must be some kind of bookkeeping, some kind of liability if money goes missing? Is this the town's liability or is this?
We, Matt's going to be there.
Okay.
Okay, the money, if the landlord's going to turn over money, that's going to go through the town. It's not the committee members that are going to be touching the money. And we have an accounting, all finances that come into the town, you have to follow a certain finance direction. And so it'll be left in an account that it basically, it's almost like a holding account. And then if it's determined that it has to go back out, we'll make sure we have the proper paperwork, and it'll then be removed and sent to where it has to be. So the committee, the committee members themselves will not be touching the money.
So basically, the town's going to have their hands in this, all over this, this whole thing. So there goes, like Brian said before, yeah, this is going to cost the taxpayers. This ain't going to be free of anything.
You got to understand that, you know, this law was created in Hartford.
Yep, I know. And just one more comment rather than a question. If this, if these arguments end up escalating to the point where they're saying, okay, I want to go to court, we're going to have attorneys involved in here. In my personal opinion, if somebody can afford an attorney to argue about a rent increase, then they can afford the rent increase. Thank you.
Arianna?
Thank you, through you. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So my question's more of an overall understanding. This is essentially a, an option for a tenant or a landlord to have a conversation prior to taking more in-depth legal action. Is that correct in understanding?
Said to me?
I'm sorry?
Through you, oh, yes, I.
Okay.
Unless you know the answer.
This ordinance provides for a mediation session before it goes before the Fair Rent Commission. The process of going before the Fair Rent Commission, I wouldn't, I wouldn't classify it as a conversation because the commission has authority to order certain remedies.
Sure. But in terms of legal finances, right, you don't have to procure a lawyer to have this initial mediation. Is that correct?
No, you don't have to have legal representation. You're allowed to have it if you so choose.
Okay. And just by chance, you know, can you share what a typical retainer fee would be for this type of, if you were to just go straight to the court?
I, it depends on the circumstances through the mayor. You know, some, some tenants qualify for legal aid, others landlords, most attorneys charge on an hourly basis.
Sure. And, you know, who, you know, based on your understanding of this sort of legal action, you know, who are the type of people who are more, most likely to rent versus own property?
That's speculation. That's?
No, I mean, he's?
It's speculation.
People of all types, right?
Okay, sure. So demographically, there's no difference between who is more likely to own versus rent? Is that what we're saying?
That's, again?
That's beyond my expertise.
Sure.
Doctor who rents from me.
Okay. So in terms of, you know, who are the people who are more likely to rent, not rent, whatever, you know, we're talking about fees associated with getting a lawyer, the overall cost of just living being increased. You know, if we're talking about contracts and coming to you, you know, how, how does one legally get out of a lease in Connecticut? What are the requirements for that?
Should be spelled out in the lease.
No, there are ways to get out of a lease. What are the ways to get out of a lease in Connecticut?
It would depend on what circumstances were, I mean, as the mayor just said.
Would it be if the housing is unsafe and violates health and safety Connecticut statutes?
That's a defense, yes, under certain circumstances.
And then if the landlord is harassing or violating the individual? That's another way, correct? Or another defense?
Potentially, yes.
So if it is unsafe, violates health and safety codes in Connecticut, do we agree that that would be unconscionable and harsh?
Well, I'm going to answer, I mean, you're talking about stuff that's handled by different departments of the town as well, because a town can step in and cite the landlord for certain things.
And to quote what you had said earlier, that some folks purchase property and then disappeared, never to be seen again, is it fair to assume that those would be the individuals who would be, we would be most concerned with protecting our community members from because we haven't seen them since they purchased this property? They just left it to their tenants to kind of figure it out on their own? I'm just repeating what you said.
And town employees and the health department deal with those people right now.
Okay. And if this is created as an extension of an already backed-up court system, you know, I'm just curious why we wouldn't support the additional help of these areas where we do see that they're backed up or in needing, in need of additional resources without having to fully?
Because this?
To the attention of the court. And if it escalates to the point where the court makes sense, then, you know, shouldn't we encourage our members in our community to have those resources?
I'll answer that. Every year that goes by, the state of Connecticut keeps putting their, their job in the courts on the towns every chance they get. And so what the state keeps doing is, these, this commission's going to cost us money. When they did the juvenile review board, that's cost us money. Every time they do this, you know, they're trying to loosen the load on themselves instead of actually addressing the issues and paying for it themselves. They want to dump it on the homeowners and raise the property taxes on the homeowners. And, I'm sorry, unfunded mandates, just, I don't like them. And if the housing court takes care of this, then the housing court should be the ones. If somebody's property is a mess and is unlivable, that's for my building department. That is for the health department to go in and make sure that that landlord fixes it. And we have fines that we can issue those landlords, and we don't have a problem. In fact, those fines can go all the way up to $250 a day until they fix it, not $25 a day. So when we start talking about that, we have to ask ourselves, which one's going to have more teeth? And I'll tell you which one's going to have more teeth. That's, that's a fine getting from the town of $250 a day, because that adds up very quickly.
And just another question, in terms of, you know, would you say that all laws, whether they come from Connecticut or from Vernon, cost the town money? Like, any ordinance we pass, would you say there is going to be some fee associated with that at any point?
No, not every single one.
So us having a, us having a ordinance about marijuana and whether or not you can have it in a community space or not in a community space, that couldn't cost us money if we had additional search and seizures? And like, I think that's kind of a silly reason to not?
Search and seizures? What?
I think it's, I'm saying like, any law, right? When we had the original ordinance about marijuana and where you could or could not have it, right?
You're totally off topic now. Return back to the topic.
I'm bringing it back to the topic of, if we are going to argue that because this is going to cost us money at some point, then what is the point of having any law if a law can at some point cost you money? This is about a extension of a regulation in the community to make sure that both individuals, and I feel, I understand having fear, of course, that I would not have fear if I wasn't owning a harsh and unconscionable, you know, area. I think that, you know, it's, it's normal to have people file complaints. That's, you know, definitely a frustrating thing that happens. But if you do not meet these 13 criteria, then I do not see any particular reason for there to be additional excess fear. If you know you're running your business in a safe and doesn't violate health and safety ordinances in Connecticut, I feel like we're having a conversation about individuals having an additional access, having additional access to resources that they may feel more comfortable with versus going to a courthouse versus trying to figure out how to have a lawyer. That was the point I was trying to make. But thank you. But thank you. Additionally, the risk in owning any sort of asset is known when you purchase any sort of investment, right? When you, I work in an incredibly regulated industry, I understand that anytime you make an investment, there is market risk. If we understand that there is market risk, what are the options for landlords if they have an asset that is not something that they want to hold on to any longer because of something like this? They can unload their asset, right?
That's an interesting thing to say when some of our biggest taxpayers are apartment complexes and to have an, you know, ah, you know what, you don't like the rules, just leave. So that's, that's an interesting comment to make, but the fact is that I don't want them to leave because they make up a, a large portion of our, our tax base. And, and many of them are very good, uh, very good for the town, but.
And if they're running their property in a safe and conscientable way, should they be fearful of this ordinance?
No, they should be fearful, they should be fearful of the courts. That's what they should be fearful, because at a $25 a day fine, what's that gonna do? You know? Or they should be fearful of my building department, because my building department's gonna go in and, and find them $250 a day, up to $250 a day. That's who they gotta be fearful of. And my building department has no problem, the health department has no problem going in there. So I, I think your argument's kinda off a little bit, but, you know, this is ordered to us by the state and, and that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate those comments. So in terms of us being required as Connecticut has mandated, this is going to take effect, correct? Or some version of this will have to take effect, correct?
It is taking effect on July 1.
And Mr., I apologize. Do you, do you mind, Thury, explaining further what types?
Forget, you gotta say through me.
I did, I said through you. I said, excuse me, through you. What additional sort of repercussions could we expect if this did not take effect July 1st? Has that been explored at all?
We've had that conversation in the beginning, and basically if we, if we don't do it, the state can order us to do it, and then they can give us the version that we're gonna follow.
Okay. And by ordering us to do it, what would that look like? They just come in and they tell us, you have to do this? Are there fines? Are there legal costs? Are we gonna be, what would that look like?
Through, through the mayor, the most likely way that would come about if, if the town did not adopt this ordinance would be through some kind of court action either brought by an, brought by some aggrieved party, presumably a.
Attorney general would do it.
The attorney general could do it, yes. And you'd end up with an order from a, a judge, essentially imposing it upon you.
So regardless, our hands are tied and this conversation is a moot point. Is that correct?
I wouldn't agree with that. You know, we, we are the government of this town. We're bringing this to the legislature of this town to discuss this.
But we can only strengthen.
And the legislature has the option to vote yes or no. And, and if it, they vote this as a no, we would face the consequences. So it's not a moot point. Everybody here has questions, and we've been answering these questions sitting around the table here.
So understanding the constitution of Connecticut, when these types of things are passed in Hartford, right? The only things, the only thing we're allowed to do, and they did give us a little bit of leeway, we cannot weaken the law, we can only strengthen. Is that correct?
We follow the law, that's what we do.
The regulation. So we follow the regulation, but we cannot say, we cannot make it, we can't change the language harsh and unconscionable to something as, that would be weaker, correct?
Right, we're not doing that.
Okay. So again, if we cannot weaken what is in front of us, we can only strengthen it, this conversation is just to answer questions, is that correct?
No, we're here to vote too. We allow the state government to just come in and tell us how to operate our town, which is what they wanna do, at least the, the party in charge out there, then, you know, basically they can just dissolve us, and that's not the case here. They're bringing it to us first, giving us the opportunity, and if we say no, they can actually bring action against us in court and force us to do it.
So the overall essence of what we are required to do has been told to us by the state of Connecticut, and we can have a conversation about how we would like to enforce this, but it is still something that we must enforce, correct?
One way or another, if the state wanted us to do it, they would, they can force us.
Okay. So the constitution of Connecticut overrides town charters, essentially?
Essentially.
Okay. So that's how that works?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Sounds like you're okay with it.
I was just trying to answer a question that somebody had earlier, that was all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mary Ann.
The penalties for offenses. If I'm reading it correctly, it's only reflecting penalty to the landlord.
Correct.
Okay, so there's no penalty to the renter for frivolous, um, you know, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I see that point there, that's what concerned me. Also, um, I know we don't have much choice here to, um, voting on it, I know the language changed.
Mary Ann, let me just, let me just answer, let me just answer the question. It's any order of the commission, so it could be either party.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so I, I will be supporting it because I do have faith in, in Matt, in handling some of the tweaking maybe before it actually hits this commission. I'm hoping it would alleviate any problems we have, but, um, yeah, it's still duplication. Thank you.
Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you first of all. First of all, you know, you call this an investment. Being a landlord is as much a business as any other business in town. The coffee shop, the car repair shop, stop and shop, grocery store, so my first inclination with this is I'll vote for this ordinance as soon as we put in a fair price, car price commission. A fair, I want, I want something to intervene with me with the electric company and the gas company, because those expenses went up. You know, the, the fair, uh, you know, pasta sauce commission, because pasta sauce is rising, or Dunkin' Donuts. Have you had a Dunkin' Donuts coffee before COVID? Before inflation, it was less, now it's a lot more. So it's a business just like that. And if I ask the landlords in town what the number one cost of doing business in the town, what's their number one expense? Does anybody know? Taxes, yes. My number one expense in all my properties is taxes, every single property, right? It's not HOA fees, it's not replacement of this, this, except when you go to replace a roof, that's more than taxes. So first of all, it's a business and not really, it's an investment, it's part of it, part of it, but it's a business. So a conscientable landlord, as you said, who is charging $2,000 a month for rent, has utilities in it, including water, electricity, and heat for gas, is gonna go up to $2,400 a month. And I know this is where it germinated, watching the news in Hartford, and they complained $400 a month is a lot more, but the expenses went up that way. So if you're protecting your investment, you're protecting your cash flow. I need cash flow to pay the expenses. I need cash flow to put a new roof on and to do all the expenses that come in, call somebody in a plumber, replace the furnace. Three years ago, furnace cost 6,000 to replace, just replaced one for $10,000. It's like the same thing. So the expenses go up and the business expenses go up, and I think, I wish people would understand this, and I know that from the state, this is a knee-jerk reaction to this, to this thing, to this situation. They, of course, caused part of it, right? Because they put taxes, and the corporations that pay, that own the businesses, the, the big properties, or Mr. Edwards LLC pays income tax, I'm sure, so there's income tax on top of that, pay income tax on top of any LLC or any property, so they paid that tax into the state. So when I look at this and I say, well, how come I got five people, or I think it was five, I forgot how many, yeah, five people and three alternates who are gonna decide how to price my business, and understand if they don't own property, understand how it works, because I don't wanna get in the middle of like a drugstore's business, because I don't understand the drug business. I can understand expenses and not, you know, electricity goes up, but how do I know what a fair price is to charge for drugs? Which we could use a fair drug price commission, can we get that in a little? Mr. Spadacini, I'm sorry, can you do that? So that's part of the problem with this. The other thing is, okay, so my tenant and I, because this is not a, a complaint about problems with the apartment, when they come in with you, with the apartment, if they, there's so much remediation now between tenants, if they have a problem, if the water leaks or the furnace doesn't work, they can call the town, they can also go to housing court. Housing court can also escrow money. In our escrow money, let me go back to that one now, when we, when you, I have a dispute with the tenant, and you're gonna hand, you're gonna handle money, are you gonna take a whole month's rent? So if I own the three family, are you gonna take one-third of my three family's rent? How am I gonna pay the mortgage and the taxes? All right? If you also, if the Supreme, Superior Court and if the commission says that I wanna charge 2,000, I charge 2,000 now and I go up to 2,400, they said you could charge 22. Are you gonna devalue my property? Because that's what you done, you decreased the income to my property and then reduced the taxes in effect, right? And the Superior Court judge gonna pay? If it goes to the Superior Court, the judge gonna say that your business is now worth less? This is the kind of intervening stuff that I really just drives, irks me with this stuff. Also in the escrow, Mr. Hellman controls the escrow, so he says, okay, Brian, you can, you have to do this, you have to replace the furnace. I replaced the furnace. Mr. Hellman, can I get my escrow back? Well, you have to wait, how many days? How many days do I get in touch with you? You're on vacation, whatever it is. Does the county council have to approve the check that's written back? Because we do do that, don't we? Won't we approve checks, I believe?
Sometimes.
Sometimes, yes. We approved a bunch today, right, at the beginning of the agenda. So that, all that stuff interrupts my cash flow, turns me into a higher cost of doing business, I have to go lend short-term to fill in the money to pay my mortgage and my interest, and believe me, everybody has a mortgage on investment property. Investment property is about, and the real estate business is about managing money and mortgaging. So that's some of my problems with this, because all this can be, is duplicated by housing court, and they can get into, into the middle of it. When Mr. Hellman becomes the arbitrator and the mediator, right, he's gonna be on paid staff, he's gonna be paid? I assume this happens during business hours?
Uh, sometimes we may make accommodations.
Okay, or, or after business hours. So anyway, we're gonna pay him, so there's an opportunity cost if he's doing this during business, he can't cease, do something else, economic opportunity cost, so there's a definite cost to the town, there's a financial function. I don't know if I'd wanna get into like what the cost of a line is and a record, but whatever, and legal counsel cost does. Is there an estimate, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Spadacini, has any town told you how much they've spent on attorneys in this ordinance, whether it's one side or the other?
Through the mayor, no, I'm not aware of that.
Okay. Uh, never mind, I was asking hourly rate.
I think you can assume that there, there is attorney fees.
Could be expensive. So this could have fallen to taxpayers of the town of Vernon, adjudicate a, a problem between two parties, which have nothing really to do with the taxpayers of the town, right? I don't care what the agreement is between Mr. Edwards and a tenant of his for rent, I don't wanna have to pay for my, for a town attorney to defend that, I don't have to pay for Mr. Hellman's time to get in the middle, when there is the housing court, right? We've had the housing court for years. So that's, listen, I just have so many problems. Yeah, oh yes, I, I forgot. I wanna get the electric court, electric price change commission in, but we already have that with PURA, and PURA does a wonderful job, as we see, don't they? Yes, defending the citizens of the state of Connecticut. Um, so let's see, here we go. Am I worried about the more, oh, and I wanted to know, curious, all the kinds of housing you are, is, does, through you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Spadacini, Airbnb, is that covered by this?
I don't, no, I believe that temporary, we provide a, a definition of.
Bear with me, counts. It doesn't say on there, yeah.
We, we accept, we exempt, I believe, rentals less than 120 days.
So if I do 125-day Airbnb rental, if I do a short-term rental in a, in, down on the flats there, in those hotels, is that?
Generally, through the mayor, generally any lease over 30 days is subject to housing court. So, yeah, you're.
Section 8 rentals, are we gonna get a dispute with our own housing authority?
Potentially.
Could happen.
How about landlords who have section 8, so landlord rents an apartment out, it's a three-bedroom house, say, can get 1,400 a month, section 8 says, oh, we'll give you 1,600 a month, and?
If you guys are talking, that's gonna be picked up by the mics, they're that sensitive. So if somebody listening can actually hear what you guys are saying.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. So the housing authority, housing authority says, well, you can rent this out for 1,600, the tenant comes in and says, and gets a, um, you know, I don't know what you call the commission's ruling, a ruling or whatever, but the commission comes out and says you can only charge 1,500, I say, the housing authority says it can have 1,600, we have a three-way lawsuit now?
The Fair Rent Commission can, in the course of determining whether a rent is harsh and unconscionable, can set a rent.
So we could be, so we're actually spending money here talking to you. Excuse me, through you, Mr. Mayor. While I'm abusing Mr. Spadacini, he's actually charging us, he's got the last laugh, there you go, right? So if I take, if I go to the Fair Rent Commission, right, and I get a ruling in my favor, right, then the tenant says we're gonna go to Superior Court, and I still get a ruling in my favor, right? And then he says, I'm not gonna pay you. So I go to eviction to the housing court, does the housing court say, give me bonus points because I went through this process?
Well, the non-payment, you, you can't not pay your rent and wait for the Fair Rent Commission to decide. You gotta pay your rent or get permission from the Fair Rent Commission to pay it into escrow.
But is this through you, Mr. Mayor? Is this, is this process gonna be bonus points to me, look good to me if I go to have to take them to the housing court? Is it gonna be any advantage to me?
I wouldn't assume so.
No, I wouldn't assume so either, yes, yeah. Uh, I don't know. This just drives me crazy, this whole thing, and I understand why they're doing it, and I'm not voting for it until we get like the, you know, the ordinance establishing, an ordinance entitled establishing a coffee price commission, or a car price commission, or, you know, stop and shop commission or things, just, just not, just, the state just gets in our business all the time and it's never good, sorry. Through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Spadacini.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? No? All right. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Terry, is your hand up? No?
Always in favor, raise your hands high, come on.
I gotta see them. One, two, three, four, five.
Recession.
We're still gonna need the recess. Let's take, let's take a recess. Five-minute recess. Any more comments? Bill.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna vote for this thing, but for only one reason, and that is to keep the town out of court when the state tries to force this down our throats. I think it's wrong, it's morally wrong for us to approve it. It's just not consistent with the need here in the town. And I'll vote to keep us out of court. Thank you.
What else? All right, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Nope, now we have eight. Bill, if you don't wanna vote for it, you don't have to. One, put your hands back up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Those against? One, two. Abstentions? One, two. Did you get all that? All right. Got it all?
Hold on.
Opposed, Bill and Julie. Abstention is Brian and Mike. All right, let's move on. Let's, actually, let's do the minutes first and then.
Mr. Mayor, the town.